Good. Thank you. Okay. I think we can get started. We do have a quorum. So I would like to call to order a regular meeting of the Cumberland School Committee on Thursday, July 15, 2021, at 7:30 PM. In accordance with Governor McKee's Executive Order 21-72 dated June 24, 2021, the Cumberland School Committee intends to conduct this meeting remotely. The public can participate in this meeting remotely, but not in person by calling 1-312-626-6799, webinar ID 94770007943, or can join via Zoom by going to the Cumberland Schools website and going to the events calendar. The first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. And pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
Which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda in compliance with Governor's Executive Order 21-72 dated June 24, 2021, discussion or vote on whether there was public access to the meeting through adequate alternative means. And I do see Mr. Chandler that there are members of the public.
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Collins, second by Mrs. Feather, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, five to zero. And for the record, Mr. Demonic and Mrs. Rogalski are not in attendance tonight. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes, regular meeting 6/24/2021, special meeting 6/29/2021, approval of minutes from the executive session 6/24/2021, executive session 6/29/2021, enrollment report 7/1/2021, school police report 6/1/2021, school bus inspection reports 7/1/2021, residency deterency report 7/1/2021. And the personnel actions, which I'll just read. Unpaid personal leave of absence for Jamie Sutherland for the 2021-2022 school year, kindergarten teacher at Garvin, and unpaid personal leave of absence for Kyle Santos for the 2021-2022 school year, special education coordinator. So I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Karen?
Yes.
Madam Chair. I actually, we need to remove the 6/29/21 minutes. I did not get those into the folder in time.
Okay, so we will be voting on the consent agenda for our items A1, items B1 and 2, items C, D, E, F, and G, but not item A2. Can we do it that way? Okay, all right, so I need a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Collins, second by.
Second.
Feather, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, five to zero. The next item on the agenda is report out of executive session meeting on July 15, 2021. And the report out of executive session votes, we did take a vote to approve the resolution of a claim with Durham Bus. And we will report out on the details at our August meeting, but that, that was a unanimous vote, but six to zero. We had six people in the executive. And the next item is a vote to seal minutes of the executive session.
Motion to seal the minutes.
Motion by Mr. Collins. Second by Mrs. Feather, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, five to zero. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Welcome to officially Cumberland. Dr. Thornton, to your first superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just the one item tonight, the return to school conversation. I wanted to update the committee on where we are right now, knowing that things can change. I have been speaking to superintendents from around Rhode Island. We also had a meeting today of the task force. Currently, we have a challenge in that many, we have a vacuum right now of a direction from the state. We've had many meetings canceled at the state level in the past couple of weeks, whether it's DOH, Governor's Office, RIDE. However, we have, you know, had multiple talks with superintendents, and we do have a common theme I want to share with you. First, I should add, we have a meeting next week scheduled with DOH on the 20th, so hopefully we'll get more, more direction. In terms of the superintendents, I can say that a lot of conversations around the vaccination rate of the teachers, around 89%, and the relatively low incidence of cases in Rhode Island. But having said that, we had a few more cases today across and down, I think, in Barrington. But overall, Rhode Island, still, you know, kind of low. So we have a common stance amongst superintendents, and I can tell you oftentimes that's not the case, but universally, in the meetings I've been in, which I'm a part of, we really have a conversation about going back to school, full capacity, with safeguards. And by safeguards, I mean things like running the air filters, open windows when the temperature allows it, regular hand sanitizing. With regard to masking, which I know is a, a big subject, there are two conversations. First, there is a federal regulation on public transportation where masking is, is required. And per Mr. Adams, our buses certainly fit that description. So we, all superintendents would be putting as part of their plan, masking on school buses, once again, windows open when it's, it's possible. The second part of masking, as far as masking of adults or kids in schools, the meetings I've been in, it's really been about parental choice. I know there are folks on both sides of that conversation, but right now, that is where the superintendents are in terms of masking for, for the children or the adults. Having said that, we also know we're hearing the potential for vaccination for younger students in October. So hopefully that, that comes to be, and that would hopefully, you know, help, help a great deal. The state was firm in regards to distance learning. As you may know from last spring, they did say next fall, there is no distance learning option. So students, you know, would be in school, or, you know, would be the homeschool choice, which you have a no distance learning option. Certainly, as you know, there are circumstances where students may be, you know, homebound or hospitalized, and certainly in those cases, we do what we always do. We give them educational services. But generally speaking, the state has been firm on that. It is back to school or, or homeschooling. Our task force, when we meet, we do recognize that we have to be flexible and responsive, and things could change quickly. Case in point, today, our district physician pointed out of some upticks on the East Bay. And, you know, we certainly have to be mindful of that. All the folks I'm talking to are talking around metrics where, you know, what metric would dictate a district, you know, putting in protocols in place, right? Right now, the best thinking we have is just simply, like last year, talking to DOH, and it's case by case. We are hoping for more direction from the state in terms of, you know, taking a more affirmative position. I know our neighbors in North and Massachusetts have a more centralized conversation on this. But unfortunately, in our state, as you know from last year, it's been very local, and that can cause a challenge oftentimes. So right now, what I would ask is, you know, we'll go to our pod meeting next Tuesday, hopefully meet with the governor in our soup's meeting shortly. I would ask if we can come back to the committee, possibly end of July, to give you more firm direction on where we think we can go, and have you certainly react to it. Our task force is meeting again next Tuesday. And we just want to be mindful of the ever-changing landscape, the Delta variant, all those things. But the overall theme is superintendents are looking at returning to school with masking being parental choice. Those are the big two pieces, if you will. Happy to take any questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Any questions or comments from any of the members? Mrs. Feather?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Thornton. I appreciate it. Um, so the one thing that I just want to comment on you touched upon, which is that metric, like what metric we're going to see that would say we've got to make some sort of change. So just, just wanted to put it out there that, that I know that I will be, I will be watching the metrics, obviously, because I'm, I'm one of the most more, I don't want to say paranoid, because I'm not paranoid, but I'm more cautious with, with, with regard to COVID. But I'm also, I'm also wondering if we're going to be able to report out on metrics of how many vaccinations or our vaccination percentage. I don't know if HIPAA.
I think it's a touchy subject in terms of certainly, I don't think, it gets tough as far as us requiring folks to share their medical information. In some cases, folks have volunteered it. But I know in some parts of the country, there's conversations around making folks report out their, their status. I think that can be difficult to do at the student level and the adult level.
Yeah, yeah. So, well, thank you. Thank you for keeping an eye on it, and I am hopeful for, for the fall.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
I have clear, I'm looking for a clarification. There is no intention to continue with the stable pods, correct?
Correct. Right now, the conversations around Rhode Island are regular opening in terms of class size, 25 in a room, let's say, not doing the pods recesses recess. Special education students would join their peers when they would join their peers in their schedule. All conversations lean, lean towards a regular opening with safeguards in terms of ventilation, et cetera.
And there's, there's, you know, just to cover all our bases, God forbid, there's an uptick in numbers. There's a contingency plan to go, to revert back those stable pods. Obviously, we spent the last year doing it. I think we're, I think we're pretty good at it.
That's our task force in terms of, we talked about things like, you know, still doing seating plans, you know, even though we're going back. But I'm not sure we'll go back to pods, if you will, but we'd have to have plans to dial things back as far as how we operate. And that's really, I think, the task force are, are one of our main conversations. What does that look like, and when does that get implemented? Last year, there was really a case of calling DOH, and they really kind of told us, you know, how and when that happened. I think a year later, we're looking for a more informed decision in terms of other metrics we can look at to really, you know, have, have a better understanding, as we're trending in the wrong direction, and kind of bracing for that.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Thornton, I just like to say thank you for taking the time tonight to give this update and to tell where you and your task force are going and what the next steps will be in estimating dates on when you'll have something put together. It, it seems to be a lot more than a lot of other towns and cities appear to be doing at this time. And I know that there are a lot of parents that have been reaching out on this topic, and the biggest issue is trying to find the right schooling for their children, knowing what we will have or what we won't have. And the amount of students that went private last year from the Cumberland School System because of all of the unknowns, it's nice to have this information starting out there that can give comfort to the parents and perhaps help make that decision to bring them back into our strong community. So thank you, thank you for the time tonight.
Sure. I think to that point, I know some folks, maybe at a policy level, wouldn't want to wait till middle of late August to make decisions. That's just not practical for a school district, for parents. Parents need to know. So our hope would be to, you know, early August, late July, we tell you where we are, and, you know, we see, you know, how folks react to that. But I think we have to have an understanding, it is flexible, it can change. But as of late July, where are we, right?
Great. All right. Thank you very much for that update, and more to come, hopefully by the end of this month. Okay, the next item on the agenda is reports of standing committees. And the first item is fiscal management subcommittee update. And filling in for Mr. Demonic tonight is Mr. Collins.
Yes, filling in for Mrs. Demonic, who is not here tonight, and the meeting went very well. Feedback was great. Um, anyway, not a lot going on. We do have a payment of bills in the amount of for later on in the amount, I have written out somewhere, it's on my other paper. So, oh, in the amount of $2,476,150.71. We also have four resolutions coming up regarding UNIVENTS, dental services, computer equipment, and an amended school budget, which is going to be discussed and voted on later on. There was no monthly business office report. Mr. Prignano is waiting for the final, like, utility numbers and stuff from last, he's waiting for the bills to come in from last month. And Sidex of Food Services Report, Ms. Blain gave, gave a presentation. There was no facilities report tonight. Mr. Jesus was pulled due to an emergency with an alarm in one of the buildings. So that's it. And then we also presented with a CHS activity report.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next is the Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update.
Yes, Madam Chair, we did not meet this past week, although policy work has been ongoing.
Thank you. The next item is the Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update. We also did not meet this week, but we will be planning on meeting next month. And the next item on the agenda is District Health and Wellness Subcommittee Update. Mrs. Rogalski isn't here today, tonight, so we don't have an update on that. The next item on the agenda is comments from the public. And so, so that the public understands, you know, public comments are a way for the public to share their opinions and views with the school committee. The school committee is not able to respond to comments, especially for something that might not be on the agenda. But the school committee will certainly listen to the concerns of the public. There is a three-minute limit on public comments, and we ask everyone to state your name and your address for the record. Mr. Fiorella will be our timekeeper. And if you would like to speak, you can raise your virtual hand. If you're on Zoom, and Mr. Chandler will bring you into the meeting. If you're on the phone, you can star six to unmute, and then we'll also let you in that way.
We do have a few people with their hands raised. The first is Grace Henson.
Hi, my name is Grace Henson. I live on 261 Hilltop Road in Cumberland, Rhode Island. And I wanted to talk about the decision not to reinstate Vanessa Malloy as the head coach of the cross-country and girls' track and field team. I have written emails to both Phil and Adolfo, and I just wanted to reiterate some things I've mentioned in those emails. I went into depth about my experience with mental health in high school, and I'm not going to go into details, but Malloy really was there for me through those times, and she always puts mental health as a priority for her athletes. And I don't know if you'll be able to find anyone else who will be there for her athletes like Malloy. She's really helped me become the best version of myself athletically and in my personal life. My first 5K I ever ran under her coaching, I ran a time over 25 minutes. And by the time my last race came of high school, I had crushed my original PR by six minutes. And this is just proof that she can coach girls to run fast. But what really makes her coaching style special is that she trains her athletes to progress and to be able to compete at higher levels. I know for myself, I raced against girls that were nationally ranked in high school, and I continued to race against them in college. And by the time college came, I had been so preserved with how my body was being treated in my training from high school, and I was beating these girls that were All-American and nationally ranked in high school because their bodies weren't cared for in a way to help them progress at the next level at their high schools. Malloy has been to several of my collegiate races just to see me and my old teammates. And this just shows how she's always there for me when I need her, and all of her other athletes, even today. I struggled getting along with a lot of my college coaches, and Malloy was always there to talk on the phone with me after tough practices. And she even personalized a training plan for me over COVID-19 to help me train throughout the pandemic. She did that on top of training with her athletes at the high school as well. She's helped me apply and receive my own position coaching cross-country here in Cumberland at McCourt Middle School. And this has been a dream of mine since I was a young athlete at McCourt Middle School. And she's known that, and she knew I would be up for the challenge of coaching while finishing my degree. And I really don't think I would be in this position in my life right now without her. And I think it's a huge mistake to let a woman like Vanessa Malloy go over miniscule things that could easily be resolved. And I don't think it's fair to her athletes at the high school and my athletes that I'll be sending to the high school, not to have a strong, incredible woman to coach them, not just in a sport, but through high school and through mental health challenges, and to help them when they feel down, whether it's academically or personally, whether they have something going on at home, or.
I'm sorry, Grace, I, I have to stop you there. I let you go a bit longer than I should have, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grace, for, for sharing your thoughts. It's clear she had a big impact on you. Thanks for, thanks for attending. Next, Mr. Chandler?
Next is Amy Goggan.
Hi, you can hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Amy Goggan, 753 Nate Whipple Highway. If you know me, you know I'm going to fumble my way through this, but I'm, I'm going to do my best. As I said in my letter to Dr. Thornton, I am not only in support of Coach Malloy, but of our female student athletes on her teams. I don't feel the need to give you further evidence of how supportive she has been to so many of our female students. That all seems to be a non-consideration at this point. You now have to deal with the public perception, and that is that you have chosen to put the interests of the adults ahead of our female student athletes, that it's not okay to question authority, it's not okay to question decisions, and do not ask for reasons. This is a message our students are hearing loud and clear. What will you do to make sure the voices of our female student athletes are heard? While I can appreciate the time, Dr. Thornton, you've put into researching everything over the past two weeks, I'm not sure you took the time to hear her side of the story if you made your decision based on information you gathered after you talked to her. So I leave you with a few questions, and yes, I know you can answer them. Is every coach being held to the same standard as she is? Do you ever listen to how some of our coaches speak to our student athletes? If you do, I can assure you, you are not holding every coach to the same standard that you're holding her to. The message here is that the adults are much more fragile than our teenagers. And finally, if this is an ongoing issue, why wasn't it addressed sooner? Did all these complaints just suddenly appear out of thin air? Have they been sitting there for years, and no one felt the need to address them? So why now? Where did the pressure come from to address them now? And while you understandably can't make any of these issues public, you should certainly be able to answer the why now, and who's putting this pressure on you. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Amy.
Ada Anderson?
Hello, my name is Ada Anderson, and my address is 22 Rosemary Road. I also want to express how upset I am at the termination of Coach Malloy's coaching position. I was an athlete on Coach Malloy's team for 12 seasons, and I truly believe that terminating her position will have longstanding negative consequences. Malloy's impact on myself and countless others has been beyond profound. As a sophomore, I began experiencing debilitating health problems and was eventually diagnosed with a chronic illness. Malloy constantly researched and adapted training programs specific to me. It got to the point where she knew what was best for my body and well-being more than I did. I could always count on her to support me in every way possible. Malloy is an advocate for everyone, especially female athletes. She showed us that fighting for what is just is preferable to merely complying with the unfair and stereotypical status quo. Now, just as Malloy has never remained silent for us, we will not be silent for her. Malloy has other countless qualities that make her a great coach. She holds a national championship title herself, has led her team to a consistently top-level performance, and is widely respected by her colleagues as demonstrated by her Rhode Island Coach of the Year awards. Malloy is truly the coach of a lifetime, and this decision will have lasting negative consequences. I ask that you find a way for this decision to be reconsidered.
Thank you, Ada. Thank you for taking the time to share your thoughts.
Heather.
Yes, hi, can you hear me? This is Heather.
Yes.
Okay, I'm actually not talking about Coach Malloy. I'm talking about the other hot-button subject of the masking. And I know I had emailed many of you prior to this. I live at 8 Hickory Road, by the way. I have a rising fourth grader at Ashton who last year had to be pulled because of his asthma exacerbation from the mask. The solution for him was to take breaks in the hallway and pull his mask down as needed, where he would miss important pieces of the lesson. So you can imagine that that was not a great, not a great option. In pulling him, we chose the full-distance learning. However, as Superintendent Thornton pointed out, full-distance learning will not be an option next year. And so that leaves me, should masking become mandatory again, the decision to homeschool, which obviously with working full-time is a challenge in itself. I am glad to hear that many of you support the parental choice. I also want to point out that a fellow advocate of mine called the Rhode Island Department of Health and asked for the scientific evidence that they're using to determine that masking children for six hours a day is safe. And after many, many attempts, she finally got a response of one study that examined roughly 45 children who wore the mask for 30 minutes. At the end of those 30 minutes, the children reported no major significant effects from the masking. However, earlier this month, a report was released with 26,000 students who wore the mask for 270 minutes, much closer to an actual school day. 68% of the children reported impairments ranging anywhere from asthma symptoms, my son, to also difficulty concentrating and trouble learning. Obviously, two impairments we wouldn't want to see in school-age children. So I'm here just to advocate the, and hope that the track that we're already on for parental choice, it comes through. I really want to see my son in school. He misses his friends, he misses his teachers. And with Rhode Island having one of the highest vaccination rates, and also zero deaths from children under 18 years old in the state of Rhode Island, one last thought, as a parent out in the community, these children are out there without masks. They're at birthday parties, they're at pools, they're at camps, they're at playdates. They're not wearing masks, and there have been no adverse reactions or no outbursts. I'm sorry, outbreaks at this point. In addition, one last thing, the preschools that don't require masks and daycares that don't require masks have not fared any worse than schoolchildren who have worn masks for the past year. Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you for attending and sharing your thoughts.
Person is Julia Dempsey.
Hi, my name's Julia Dempsey. My address is 335 West Rantham Road. I'm also here to talk about Vanessa Malloy. I really think Cumberland has made a major mistake. Malloy, with, along with others, have helped me find such a passion and success in running. And I don't even think I would have been able to get into college without her help. And now I'm going to graduate school, and I'm still running five years after being out of high school. Just because Malloy has made me love this sport so much. Other coaches will make people hate the sport, and it's so easy to hate. But when you're coached by someone who cares about their athletes so much, it's so much easier to stick with. She's just so dedicated to her athletes, and it's so clear Malloy has touched the hearts of over 1,000 people, as if you saw on the petition that Grace Henson had. And if not, so many more people. She's guided so many young girls through high school and put them on the path toward success in life. And it's just so clear that Malloy is the backbone of Cumberland Track and Cross Country. And there's no one that will ever do a better job than Malloy. And I just really want you all to reconsider and maybe help her get back on. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Thanks for taking the time. As a reminder, if you're, if you're not sure, if you want to raise your hand, you would go to the participants button, and next to your name, you'd have the option to raise your hand. But, Mr. Chandler?
Julia Lavery.
Hi, everyone. My name is Julia Lavery. I am an incoming sophomore at CHS. Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Julia Laverty. I am an incoming sophomore at CHS, as well as a number of high school girls cross-country. In fact, I know you've heard a lot about Malloy this evening and in the past few weeks, but I'd just like to um, raise greater awareness for this issue. I would like you all to take a moment and look back on a non-parent adult who was influential in your childhood, your youth. Maybe they're still a huge influence in your life today. So your role model. Perhaps they were a teacher, an uncle, maybe even a family friend. For me, this past year, that adult has been Vanessa Malloy, the former girls' cross-country and track and field coach at Cumberland High School. I recognize the school committee is not involved in the hiring of school staff per state law, and I am also aware no comments can be made on the issue I'm about to speak about as it is not on today's meeting agenda. However, I hope to convey to everyone here, uh, Superintendent Thornton and Athletic Director Lantard, the crippling impact firing Malloy from her position as coach will have on our running team and school community in the upcoming year if this action is not reversed. I admit, I do not know the reason for her being fired. I have been told there's no due process for coaches, so maybe there is not one. I'm not at liberty to say because I don't know. What I would hope for everyone here to grasp, however, is the irreplaceable role Malloy has in the lives of our student athletes. She is our track and trails mother. She is our friend. She is family. Malloy helps us find who we want to become as an athlete, a student, a person, and a citizen on a local and global scale. Rare is a coach that has memorized all their athletes' PRs, selflessly stepped in tougher meetings that did not need her responsibility. She shows equal attention to all her athletes regardless of speed or performance, leads her team to multiple sportsmanship awards, wins RIL coaches' year and ignores the hanging relay flags instead. Or who is as vital to the success of the student body athletically, academically, and mentally as Malloy is. I consider the lack of communication to athletes regarding a reason for her being let go to be shameful, even though it is not necessary. I do not know all circumstances regarding the situation again, but I do know at least one thing. Without Malloy, the academic and athletic success, ability to lead a balanced lifestyle, and mental wellness of the athletes on the girls' XTCF team put at considerable risk. And that the well-being of our students is supposedly weighed above any and all other concerns. I pray this matter is thoroughly discussed um, with open minds, please. And accurate information by all those who are able to enact changes in this situation. Thank you for your time. Also, I'm sorry, I forgot to state my address. I live at fifty-six Winston Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Thank you for taking the time to speak tonight and to email us.
This time, there are no other hands up. Sorry about that. One just popped up. Jamie Hollenbeck?
Hi, it's difficult to follow that. Pretty eloquent um, high schooler there, um, which speaks well to our education system here in town. We have been very fortunate to have our children have fantastic coaches through the high school as well as the middle school. We couldn't ask for better, and we're very, very grateful. Coach Malloy has been an amazing coach when the season's going well, and she's an even better coach when there are struggles. The team's record speaks for itself on how well she does when things are going well. But it's difficult to quantify how much she's helped those during times of struggle, both the whole team as well as individuals. She models perseverance and an extremely strong work ethic. She's also psychologically minded and supports her athletes at every turn. In twelve seasons, we only have witnessed her be a strong role model for young women and represent Cumberland in the best possible way. If my numbers are correct, the high school now only has five female coaches. That number is not reflective of our community. We need strong female voices, as demonstrated by the members of the school committee, which is great to see. We know that the research demonstrates a significant decline in confidence for females during early adolescence, particularly in co-education environments. That's something that we have known for a very long time. We also know that athletic programming is one important way to support young women in developing as well-rounded adults. This decision does appear to undermine these values. I hope that you will find some way to reconsider and allow Coach Malloy to continue. I forgot, my daughter is reminding me that I forgot to mention my address, just twenty-two Rosemary Road, so I apologize for not catching that at the beginning. But I did, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I hope you will consider allowing other young runners being able to have the opportunity to be coached by such a gifted individual. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Jamie.
Nicole would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Nicole. Again, to kind of what everybody has said here, I'm to speak on behalf of Vanessa Malloy. I can't say enough.
Um, Nicole, it's, it's a little hard to hear you. You're breaking up.
Can you hear me a little bit better now?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I, I can't say enough positive things about Vanessa Malloy and the impact that she's had on both of my children. I have a daughter who graduated in the class of twenty-twenty, um, who is still in contact with Malloy. Uh, she has definitely helped her through her first COVID year of college, um, and, and we appreciate her support. And she has always been there for my younger daughter, who is an incoming junior, uh, who spent the whole sophomore year at home, uh, as a distance learner. She was always there to support my daughter, encouraged her to continue running, even though she wasn't in school. She chose not to participate in indoor and outdoor track. But Malloy was always encouraging her, keep running, um, you know, watching out for her mental health as well. I'm not sure of the actions or the reasons why uh, she was removed as the coach, but I really would like you to consider the children and the runners and what an impact this is going to have on so many students. I feel like the kids really need this right now, the support of, of a strong female in their lives, especially after this very odd year of COVID. So if I can just ask you to really reconsider, think about this. It is, it is greatly appreciated by the cross-country family, and that is what Coach Malloy has, has given these kids is another family. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole, for sharing your perspective.
Alexandra Pina?
Hello, my name is Alexandra Pina, and I live at ten Swan Road. I also wanted to speak on behalf of Coach Malloy. I had the privilege to be coached by her for four years at CHS. I graduated in twenty-eighteen, and I wanted to emphasize the fact that her impact on me has lasted long past high school. She has helped me become a strong and independent young woman and has been a great role model for me. If it was not for Malloy, I would not be where I am today. When I entered high school, I had no interest in running. I was a softball player. My sister, who was also coached by Coach Malloy, encouraged me to try it out for one season. Coach Malloy made me love not only running, but the environment she created on her team. I had made immediate best friends, people that I would not normally have been friends with in high school. I cannot thank her enough for the influence on me and my teammates. Her effect as a coach goes way beyond running, and I think she should be reinstated as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexandra.
Emily Barad?
Um, hello, my name is Emily Barad. I live at four zero seven eight Diamond Hill Road. I'm also going to be speaking on Malloy because it is such a tremendously disheartening issue. When I found out that this was even like considered that she was going to be removed from the Cumberland school system, I was infuriated because of how overwhelmingly positive she has been in my experience as both a coach and a teacher. I had a lot of trouble gaining confidence in my high school experience, confidence in my ability to succeed academically, and she was such a huge support system. I remember in running, she always told us, focus, fight, and finish. And I've held that with me. I just graduated college and I have held that with me. Anything I do, I can focus and I just fight against myself and all the external factors, and I can finish through it. I remember I was not a advanced person on the team. I was not very great at running. I was determined, but that was it, and she was by my side encouraging. And I remember I was a three-season captain my senior year, and I was completely blindsided by that because I wasn't um, the top runner, but I was, she saw in how much I cared about the team and how much I wanted to be there for people. And I just, I can't speak enough about how powerful she is in realizing when people need help. When her students are struggling, when her athletes are struggling, she's there for them however they need. And I could not have imagined having a better coach, a better female support system in general in my high school experience. She let us come to her room when we were struggling in classes. During lunch, if I felt so anxious and broken down in the cafeteria that I couldn't eat there, I could go to her room. I just, it pains me and it makes me so angry to think about that there's potential students that won't be able to experience her coaching, her, just her poise, and I, I could speak all night on this factor and reiterate any, everything that everyone else said because it is just so important that these things don't get overlooked in that if she is not going to be reinstated, then she deserves clear reasons why because she is an incredible asset to the Cumberland faculty in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. It's clear she had a big impact on you.
Lizzy Pickering?
Hello, so my name is Elizabeth Pickering. I live at twenty-four Fairview Ave., and I'm also here regarding Coach Malloy. I wrote a speech, but I'll keep it short, and I'll send you guys the full speech for all of you to read. I was also a softball player turned into a runner for, and I ran for Malloy. And she personally helped me through my mental health issues as well as my physical health issues as I struggled with low iron issues, and I had to receive iron infusions twice during my four years. And she helped me adjust my training and really helped me get through that. To say that she loves her athletes is an understatement, as recognized by others such as Blake Rogers, a male athlete at LaSalle who runs cross-country and track for their teams. He says, "I've never gone to Cumberland High School or lived there, but at every meet I have competed at with Coach Malloy is, she is one of the few coaches who always talks to me. She is one of the kindest coaches in RIL and has a list of teams and individuals and other athletes that would sorry. And other accolades that would be a mile long. I have a, I've heard nothing but great things from her and her student athletes that have competed under her, and she has always done what is best for the team in RIL. She has created a family for the girls' team at Cumberland and helped bring the girls together and form lifelong relationships. She has even volunteered to help Ocean State Running to benefit everyone who follows track and field in Rhode Island. Another statement from another parent at LaSalle who stated, "I've always respected the way Malloy gets the most out of her athletes and better yet inspires them to be great women." These examples and receiving her coach's award clearly does not reflect the decision of her firing. And I have had many coaches in my life, and I've played many sports growing up in our town, and none of the coaches have compared to Malloy. Coaches are defined as enthusiastic, knowledgeable, supportive, trusting, goal-oriented, motivating, positive, and passionate. Characterizing Malloy with these qualities would be an understatement in her coaching abilities. However, these are the decision, the few of many qualities I would like to share about her. So I would like you to rethink the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Lizzy.
Sandy?
Sandy Pickering, twenty-four Fairview Avenue, Cumberland. I, as well, am speaking on behalf of Vanessa Malloy. When I learned the news, I was shocked at the decision. Malloy has been coaching over twen, over fifteen seasons at Cumberland High School. This packs, this past track, indoor track season, she was voted Coach of the Year by her fellow coaches in the state of Rhode Island, as well as in twenty-sixteen. She also had her team be voted the Best Sportsmanship Award, which again is truly an award that she deserves credit for as well by defining the team. Malloy has created a team dynamic that is true family. By creating this team bond, the girls' cross-country team has been successful and undefeated for the past six years in the Northern Division. Coach Malloy is called one word on the track circuit, Malloy. Not many coaches or not many people are just called one name. That's one name that I will never forget. Malloy tells her athletes they don't have to be the best, they don't have to be the best athlete, they don't have to be the best runner, but they must try their best. Malloy allows athletes of all levels to compete on the girls' team, which you've heard tonight. She is a no-cut coach, which has the ability to instill in females that there is hope for them. Malloy pushed our daughter to her fullest. She got results out of our daughter. Our daughter didn't think that she could do it, but Malloy believed in her and she pushed her. Everyone knows track is not a glamorous sport, and not everyone loves it. My daughter only chose running to get in shape for softball. That's all she wanted, and now she runs every single day. She was a four-sport athlete in high school. A big part of that goes to Coach Crowley on the softball team and Malloy. They allowed her to participate in both sports. Practicing, Malloy would create practice plans for her, so after softball was done, she would go and do her workouts on her own. Not many coaches would be willing to put the time and effort in to help an athlete succeed. Malloy has coached two of my daughters, twelve years apart. Our first daughter, she said she was, um, she was not a very good runner, but Malloy always said the team always came first. There were individual goals, but it was related to the team. Malloy spent a lot of personal time, aside from the sports team, to help my daughter in a personal situation, and I feel she helped save her. She helped develop her into the woman that she is now, going to the University of Missouri to become a doctor and help children like they helped her. Malloy continues.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sandy. Uh, I hate to interrupt you, um, but you have gone quite over your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Will Anistvett? Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Will Anistvett. I live at twenty-seven Green Meadow Lane in Cumberland. I've had both, uh, one daughter so far and two sons go through Cumberland High School. Some who ran and some who didn't because they chose not to. I've seen all the parts, I think, of the coaching and competition um, at CHS. Uh, overwhelmingly, I, uh, I see that running is hard on kids mentally and physically. It's really hard, both boys and girls. Watching the way that the kids go through these programs, overwhelmingly, Malloy's efforts are to the benefit of the kids. Not only does she get good results from them, she nurtures them and carries them through, like Grace Henson said, without damaging them long-term. The, everything it, that she does is focused on the students she is coaching and has coached in the past. A lot of folks don't know that her son is a runner at another school, and often she sacrifices her attendance at his meets in order to see the ones that her, uh, her own runners are at, which I think is a profoundly difficult choice for a parent to make, and it demonstrates a commitment to a professionalism that goes unremarked upon. The only thing that could possibly counterweight this is some sort of an argument coming from adults, because no child or parent in this community has had a kid run for Malloy is, has anything to my knowledge to say against her. Education's about the students. It's not about the parents and the community, and it's really the teacher set there he goes aside in order to do this. Um, education's about the students, it's not about the parents and the community and it's really the teacher set there he goes aside in order to do this work. Um, it sounds as if something has disturbed your priorities here and, uh, there's still a chance to set this right. Um, you can realign what's most important and reconsider this decision and reinstate her. Um, and demonstrate that the focus in this town is still on the kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
At this time, I do not see any other hands raised. Oh, again, sorry. Five E. T S one.
You can state your name and your address, unmute.
Hi, my name is Nancy Henson. I live at two six one Hilltop Road. I am speaking on part of Vanessa Malloy too. Um, it's more of just a statement for Mr. Thornton. I really hope he listened to all the parents, the students, former athletes. How heartbroken the town of Cumberland is. That we lost her as a coach and he has the power to make this right. He can do the right thing. He's heard girls crying. That's how much love we have for Malloy. So he has the power in his hands to fix this mistake. And like Will just said, it's nothing Malloy has done. This is adults. You need to do the right thing for the children, Mr. Thornton. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Deb Malcolm.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, I just wanted to address all of you, um, and it's separate from, uh, the, uh, discussion with Coach Malloy. Uh, but I wanted to acknowledge the recent passing. Of, uh, Joseph Alberg, who was the music teacher at Cumberland Hill Elementary and Ashton Elementary. And just acknowledge, um. Not only Joe and his family and this immense loss that our, our school communities and our school families. Are grieving right now. Joe was also a graduate of Cumberland High School. And, um, will certainly be missed and I just wanted to acknowledge the professionalism. And the respect that the staff at both Cumberland Hill and Ashton demonstrated. Out of respect and love for Joe, he will greatly be missed. And we also want to acknowledge, um, the support from Dr. Santa's office. Uh, for helping not only the students, but, uh, Joe's colleagues through what is going to be a very difficult. Transition into the upcoming school year. So I appreciate the time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Malcolm.
I'll give it another minute. At this time. I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay. Then we can, uh, move along in our agenda. The next item on the agenda. Is old business, discussion and a vote to approve resolution. Um, S C R twenty twenty one oh three fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two amended school budget. Um, Mr. Collins, do you want to, um?
I will, I will take over. I will do my best, uh. You know, as I said during, uh, fiscal subcommittee, it would take a lot to match the understanding of this that, uh, Mr. Pignano. Um, presented it. But, um, there is an amended budget. We are looking at, uh, S C R twenty twenty one dash three. A resolution authorizing and empowering the Commonwealth School Committee to amend the twenty twenty one, twenty two budget. From seventy four million, one hundred sixty three thousand, eight hundred and seventy four. Seventy four million, three hundred and ninety two thousand, two hundred and eighty four. Dollars, an increase of two hundred twenty eight thousand, four hundred and ten. Dollars in order to be in compliance with the town approved school budget and school committee changes this past, uh, subcommittee two to zero. Um, and Mr. Pignano, um, agreed to, uh. Explain to the public what exactly this all means.
And Dennis, thanks for that, uh, nice introduction. Um, yeah, uh, as you know, we submitted a budget, uh, to the town council and the mayor. A couple of months ago that called for a four percent increase from the town. We weren't able to get four percent increase from the town, so we've had to make some. Adjustments to our budget. At the same time, some other things of, you know, that we've learned about, um, over the last couple of months are also included in this, uh. In this amendment. So I'll try to go through these, uh, not too long. I know the, uh, there's other, this, other things on the agenda tonight. Um, I don't know if, uh, I, I had sent out a copy of the new budget. And you've got the resolution, but on page forty six of the budget document. You can see what was currently in the budget that you passed and what the proposed numbers will be. So. You can, uh, you can see where we were and where we're going to with various numbers. But anyhow, let me stop. Um, as you all know, we asked for a million eight forty eight, three twenty three from the town of Cumberland. And, um, that would have represented a four percent increase, a four percent ask from the town. Were able to get eight hundred and forty eight thousand, three twenty three. So we, we, we had to take a million dollars off that number. That town appropriation is important because it's maintenance of effort. What we get from the town. Um, one year carries forward until the next year. So maintenance of effort is important. So we're going to get eight forty eight, three twenty three of. Um, dollars that will come to us again next year. We had put three hundred thousand dollars in the budget from our designated fund balance for educational supplies to help pay for curriculum. That the Assistant Superintendent's Office will be looking to buy as, uh, you know, uh, Ride has established some curriculum requirements. That will result in us spending about a million two over the next three years. And we wanted to start that purchase process. We're not going to be able to start that process. And so I've reduced that amount from the designated. Fund balance and I transferred it to, and this is get, we get into accounting terms here, but the undesignated fund balance. So we'll still be using the same amount of fund balance. But now the fund balance is not, is undesignedated. It's not for a specific purpose. It's nice to use when you do use fund balance. For it to be for a one time expense that won't reoccur again. That we're not, we're not doing that because we're not buying, we're not buying the curriculum. And so next year before the budget process starts, we'll be looking for a million eighty nine of one time revenues that we're using this year. The, there's an increase in master lease payments. The, um, the amount six ninety three, two eighty three. I didn't have that amount when we submitted the budget. Last year, that number was five twenty, one twenty three. And what that number is, is that represents the amount of money the town is paying on behalf of us. For master leases that they've done in the past. So next year, the town will spend six hundred ninety three thousand, two eighty three out of the town budget. To pay for leases, some of the things we did at McCourt and the elementary schools on health and safety leases we had in the past. That number is also offset. You'll see it down below in the appropriations. Yet that, you know, we budget the lease payment in the business office. So it's an offset. It's just that one seventy three on both sides. It's just putting in the right number that I now know it. I didn't know it back in, uh, back in, um. March when we submitted the budget. The, um. Last year, you recall, there was a four hundred thousand dollar revenue that the mayor provided for us. It was going to be if we were to need it. And if we ran a surplus, we wouldn't get it. If we ran a deficit, he would give us up to four hundred thousand dollars. Of, uh, funds that would, would, that would help us balance our budget. If we ran a two hundred thousand dollar deficit, we'd get two hundred thousand. Um, he's agreed to do that again this year. So we have a buffer in there of that four hundred thousand dollars that. If we do have a shortfall, the town will, will provide up to four hundred thousand dollars to help cover it. Also, he's, he, we're in, he, America, and I've talked about a capital. Creating a capital account, a capital reserve account for some of the items that we need. We need boilers in the, at the high school. The roof at the high school could use some repairs. Not all of this money is in the new town bond issue. Um, so he's, he's put six hundred thousand dollars aside for a capital reserve for us. We're going to take three hundred thousand of it in this year. So if you take the eight forty eight, the four hundred thousand that I mentioned for non maintenance of effort money, that was, um. That will help cover any shortfall we have. And that three hundred thousand dollars, that gives you a million. A million five forty eight. So we're about three hundred thousand dollars short of our million eight forty eight ask. An increase of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in tuitions from other districts. That's some, um, an additional number of students that are going to be coming from other. Uh, school systems to take part in our, uh. Uh, C T E program. And so those students are enrolled and, uh, that we should generate that six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of additional income. Uh, there's an increase in pre- preschool tuitions. We're looking at about thirty more kids coming into the district. Uh, for preschool and I've added thirty thousand dollars in the budget for some of that tuition costs. Uh, expense, revenues, excuse me. And then, uh, a high school security reimbursement. We all know that we're doing the, the front of the, um. High school where we've, uh, we, we had a project outdoor with the security gates and. Creating kind of a moral effect that they, at the, at the high school, creating a new entrance that's, uh, that, uh. Doesn't allow people to come in the, the front door there and go anywhere in the building. Um, and then we're also doing the inside now with, uh, with, uh, re- renovating rooms. So guidance and special ed offices can move down there. Um, we have about three hundred and thirty five thousand we spent in last year's budget. We'll be getting revenues in to cover that cost from a lease. And I've included that in the budget. So all those revenues, the pluses, minuses, uh, lead to an increase of two hundred and twenty eight thousand, four ten on the revenue side. On the appropriation side, quickly, the Assistant Superintendent curriculum purchases, we had three hundred thousand. We've cut that to zero. So it's a reduction of three hundred thousand. We had budgeted three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars of breakage and, and breakage is basically, we budget everyone to get paid every. Day that they would be eligible to work during the year. If you work fifty two weeks, we play, we budget you for fifty two weeks of salary. That usually, that doesn't usually happen with, for everyone in the district. People, you know, leave, take other jobs, get sick, those type of things that happen. Um, we've had, we've increased that number to five fifty four now. So we're counting on five hundred and fifty four thousand dollars of salaries not being spent. Which is higher than we normally budget, but, and it's, uh, two hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars higher than we had budgeted in this budget, uh, earlier. We're going from three twenty five to five fifty four. The increase in the town master lease payments, I mentioned the increase of a hundred and seventy three thousand is so upset by that same number up above in the, in the revenues. I had budgeted it back when we submitted the budget. We were, we still hadn't really balanced the budget to. Uh, you know, completely. And we thought maybe we would budget, um, additional retirees. You know, because usually we have additional retirees as the year goes on. We now know who's, who has retired. I'm reducing that number, uh, that negative ninety six thousand because it was a savings in the budget. To zero. So it, it actually acts as an increase in expenses of ninety six, eight oh seven. And then ninety six, eight oh seven is part of that five fifty four of breakage. So. It's really a transfer to from retirees because we know where we stand with, with employees now and, uh, and moved it to breakage. Um, school committee stipends went from sixteen two to thirty six. That was an increase of nineteen eight. High school curriculum, I mean, excuse me, I missed one. Uh, increase in transportation. I had budgeted savings of a hundred and seventy four thousand dollars and, um. You know, and with the new, um. Settlement we just had with, uh, with Durham, that will, that won't be a hundred and seventy four thousand in savings. It'll be fifty five thousand. So it's an increase of a hundred and eighteen thousand in the budget. A high school curriculum coordinator, I've added to the budget for, for ninety three, nine seventeen. The school committee asked the, um, the, the administration to put that in the budget. I've also added a second dean that Dr. Thornton feels is necessary at the high school. Fifty eight thousand, nine oh seven. Uh, preschool T A's, we had seven because of the increase in, uh, in population there. We're, we're going to add two T A's, an increase of forty eight thousand, four ninety eight. Uh, a transportation coordinator. Um, we, we, we need help with transportation. It's, uh. And so we're going to put a transportation coordinator on to work with Durham. Part of a settlement we have with them is that. Both parties have certain responsibilities and this, uh, this person will, will handle much of the coordination between the district and the bus company. Um, an assistant elementary principal was added into the budget, but. What we use funds from an assistant high school principal, we reduce high school principals from three to two. And we've added that money into an elementary principal. So basically a wash. Um, the high school overages, um, we've added some money there. The, the high school principal is. Especially with, uh, a number of children coming in from other districts and, um, uh, high school population up. We've, we've got more kids at the high school than, than last year. There may be some need for some additional positions. I've added some. Money in there for, for sections that we may have to add. A hundred and eight thousand dollars, uh, a hundred and eight thousand dollar increase. Which could handle maybe one or two people. Uh, the superintendent's salary is the same as the old superintendent's, except that we pay, we pay five thousand dollars for a doctorate and I've added that, that in. Uh, charters and vocational tuitions. When we put the budget together, it was estimate what the tuition amount would be. We now have that number from Ride and it results in a nineteen thousand dollar, nineteen thousand, six hundred dollar increase. Fringe benefits, the pluses and minuses of jobs results in additional costs in Medicare and social security. And I put that in twenty thousand, five thirty two. And then STAR, which is a tool that the district uses mainly at the elementary schools, but also the middle schools, whatever. Was in the budget that state last year paid for that. Paid for that and they're going to, and they're going to continue. We recently got notice that they were going to pay for it again. So I've taken that number out of the budget, seventeen, six, thirty eight. And that gets you to the same two eighty four, four ten up above. Um, uh, you know, I kind of don't know if I gave, uh, these, some of these line items, uh, enough justice, uh, yes, I. Didn't want to go into a terrible lot of detail, but I'm happy to answer any questions or. Any questions, uh, you have later on, email me. I'm happy to, to discuss any of them.
Um, Mr. Ferrell.
Mr. Pignano, uh, you had mentioned we were going to get the rebate for the security project.
Yes.
I, is that not going to the town?
It's not a rebate. It's, it's, but what it basically is.
The, the reimbursement, I mean.
Yeah, we had, we said, we had expenses last year that we paid for out of our budget. And will, and have not yet been, been reimbursed for the master lease. When that money comes in. I'm going to apply it in this year's budget because I think we're okay with last year. I think we're going to balance our budget without that reimbursement. It's come, it's come in in July anyhow, and I'm going to let it go into next year's budget. So that can help us balance next year's budget. Kind of a one time solution though, because it's for, you know, a revenue that won't be there in the future.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Pignano?
I know I kind of hurried through it. So, you know, if anything wasn't clear, you know, please feel free to, you know, email me or whatever. I'm, I'm happy to go over with anyone. So that. They understand exactly what's happening.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we, um. Need a motion to approve this resolution.
I will make the motion to approve, approve the resolution.
Motion by Mr. Collins and second by.
I'll second.
Ms. Smith, um, all in favor?
I.
I oppose. The eyes have it five to zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of returning to in-person school committee meetings. And discussion of next steps on that. So. We know that there is still an executive order where we need to provide, um, remote access to the public. Um, even if the committee is in person. So I think Mr. Chandler is. Equipped and knows how he would handle that. I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Chandler, but I heard that was the truth.
It is.
And we've seen that happen with the, the one time council meeting that was in person as well. And I know, um, Dr. Thornton, that we may need to look for a different venue. Considering what's happening with transitional building in the fall.
That's correct. With Mr. Chandler, we would look around the district for other, other venues, be it a library, be it an auditorium, but probably not in the trans cast.
So, yes, Ms. Smith.
Hello.
Hi there, big boy, Dell.
I'm here to discuss.
Hold on, hold on. We just need Alex to be muted. Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just, um, as a thought, uh. If anybody read today in the article that the. Pascal property that the town has taken over, there is a small building on there and they are going to be, um. Accessing it and looking for people to use it. So it may be something that we could talk to. So it may be something that we could talk to the mayor about just as another opportunity. Just just in case, because I know that it's difficult sometimes to lock in dates with the library and the spacing that is permitted may not be enough either. So.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And I think we'll be exploring options like the high school auditorium, maybe the high school library, maybe one of the middle schools. So there's still work to be done to figure out how exactly we would do this. But just wanted everyone to know that we will be making taking steps to get us back to in person. And not sure exactly of the timing of that. Any other comments or questions that anyone has about about that?
I was just going to say, oh, sorry, Madam Chair.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just pointing to you. Yes, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I was going to reference the the time that we were able to do both for for another meeting where I was not physically present, but the rest of the committee was. So so I I think, you know, I think it definitely will work with the with the public and providing the remote option.
Yeah, good. Okay, so that was just.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Adams.
Just very, yeah, just as a heads up, there is legislation percolating that you or may or may not be aware that may make not necessarily completely virtual permanent, but requiring virtual access and not doing it as part of the pandemic. Because I think so many public bodies have found it to be such a successful way for the public to participate. So I imagine that there will be something passed by the legislature, maybe even this year.
Yeah, I had heard that too, which I think would be great. We've had a lot of great public interaction and access through this means. Okay, so if there are any other comments about that, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is new business, which got a lot of fiscal in here, Mr. Collins. So the first item.
Go time, all right.
And I want to thank you again for stepping in for Mr. Demodica tonight.
It's all right. So we have SCPR 07 2021-34. This is a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to make a partial payment to any systems of Kent Mass for purchase of UN events for both the main high school building and high school trans building in an amount not to exceed four hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-three cents. With the work renovate renovation being done at the trans building. This is to compensate E and E, who's already been granted the work, partial payment for the vents, because that's a large chunk of money. This is going to come out of the bond, the seventy-nine million dollar bond. This passed Fiscal Subcommittee 2.0, and I would move passage.
Okay, Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve passage of SCPR 07 2021-34. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
I.
I. Eyes have it five to zero.
Next up is SCPI 07 2021-35. This is a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to award a contract to Renzinevic Scholastic Dental Services for dental scholastic services for the 2021-2022 school year in the amount not to exceed two thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. This went out to bid a while ago. This is going to come out of the Health Services Budget. But essentially, this Dr. Riznevic is a retired dentist from Manville who does work at different schools, provides dental services that I think at a pretty good rate compared to what I pay for my own kids. And this passed Fiscal Subcommittee 2.0, and I would move passage for the resolution.
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Mr. Pignano, I don't recall ever having this kind of a resolution come up before regarding dental services. Is this something new or is this just something that, I don't know, I never noticed?
Well, I we, for the number of years, we had twin sisters in town basically provide the service out of about as volunteers. They notified us a couple of years ago that they no longer could were able to to continue to do that. And we went out to bid. We didn't get any bids. So last year, because of the pandemic, with this, we didn't provide this service. The state didn't want, obviously, you know, dental services being being done in the schools and that type of stuff. And so the George Resnovic contacted us and I guess he's contacted a number of districts, sent us his resume and asked for some information basically on how many kids we have at each elementary school and that sort of thing. And he came back with a price for us. So we met with him, the head of the head nurse of the district and myself met with him. He has his license is in good standing. He's retired. He does this on the side now basically to keep busy. And Donna checked with nurses in other districts that he's doing done work in, and they all gave him good reviews. You know, he comes in the school, works quickly and is fine with the kids and all that sort of stuff. So at at a price of two thousand nine twenty-two, we don't have to necessarily put this type of service on the paper for that type of amount because it's under the five thousand dollar charter requirement. And so we're just happy to have someone now perform the service for us because we were having difficulty finding someone. So that that's why you're seeing the resolution.
Thank you. I will I will second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I.
I. Oppose. The eyes have it five to zero.
Except we have it. Next up, we have SCPI 07-2021-36. This is a resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to execute a purchase from Hub Technical Services of Forty-four Norfolk Ave, Southeastern, Mass for nine TrueTouch interactive touch panels, touch panel stands for the high school in an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars. This is coming out of the town, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar lease. This passed Fiscal Subcommittee 2.0, and I would move passage.
Okay, Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve resolution SCPR 07 2021-36. Do we have a second?
I will second with discussion.
Second with discussion, Ms. Smith?
Just to clarify, I believe that the wording Chromebooks is in there and that has been removed. That was approved as the change. It is the touch panel stands, not Chromebook stands. And I not.
Did I say that? I thought I took it out, like it was crossed out. Sorry.
No, sorry, I it might have been changed. And yeah, so that that was the only thing. And I believe it's what, twenty-eight thousand? How much again, Dennis?
Twenty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Okay, all right. So I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I.
I. Oppose. The eyes have it five to zero. The next item on the agenda is discussion and a vote to approve payment of bills. We have any?
Fiscal sub Fiscal Subcommittee received a payment of bills in the amount of covering 2021 and both 2122, the current fiscal year in the amount two of two million four hundred and seventy-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-one cents. This is contingent upon eight hundred and ninety-three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven, two dollars, not in seven dollars and ten cents that was owed to Durham. So the final total, again, including that money to Durham, is two million four hundred and seventy-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-one cents. And I will move, I would move passage.
Okay, Mr. Collins makes a motion to pass affirmative payment of bills. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
I.
I. The eyes have it five to zero. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is school committee comments, school liaison reports. Any comments from the school committee? Mrs. Feather?
Just wanted to echo what Mrs. Malcolm said earlier. All three of my kids had had been taught by Mr. Alberg. And and so it was a sad, a sad week here and a sad week in Cumberland. So just my condolences to his family.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Um, I want to express, well, first of all, welcome to Dr. Thornton. Regarding the Coach Malloy matter, and I want to kind of be careful what I say here. I want to start by saying it's unfortunate that Dr. Thornton inherited this from the previous superintendent. This is not how he should, you know, this is not difficult. Hopefully, there's other matters. I want to thank him for doing a very thorough job. I wanted to thank him for being updating the school committee on where he was at with the investigation. And unfortunately, he did do his due process. But I just want to express that while I respect his position, it is entirely his decision. But one man's opinion, my opinion is I think he came to the wrong decision.
Thank you. Any other comments from the school committee?
And I want to point out that I've already told that to Dr. Thornton directly. So it's not like this is out of courtesy.
Any other comments from the school committee? No, we're good. Okay, and yes, welcome, Dr. Thornton. Your first two weeks on the job, you haven't had a dull moment yet. So thank you for everything you're doing so far. And next item on the agenda is vote to go into executive session. And Dr. Thornton, I don't think we have that tonight.
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, so then the next item is adjourned. Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Mr. Fiorella, second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
I.
I.
The eyes have it five to zero. The meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-one PM.
Good night, everyone.